You are watching Access La Porte County, Channel 97. Coming up next, the April 23rd workshop of the La Porte County Planning Commission. You can get more information for this workshop by going to www accesseslaportecounty.org.
All right, good evening, everybody. This is going to be our workshop for the Solar, for the Plan Commission tonight. We're going to have our, do our pledge of allegiance this evening, tonight at 6:00 for our regularly scheduled meeting, so we don't, so we don't wind up doing it twice here this evening. Just for, just for the edification of everybody here, we've had several meetings with our Solar Committee coming into this, as well as, obviously, there was a workshop the Commissioners did several weeks ago. I know most of the members of the Board watched that, either were here in person or watched it online as well. We're going to have some discussion here amongst the Board, a little bit, to kind of bring everybody up to speed on what we, what we found out during our committee, what we looked at there, and then, then wind up opening up the floor later to, to public comment as well, and then, kind of see how the evening unfolds here as we go with this. So, Mr. Beechey, do you want to start us off with some of our Solar Committee meetings?
Yeah, so we, our committee met, we took a look at some revisions, got through part of the ordinance, and then, before our next committee meeting, I became aware of a new Indiana statute that was passed on July 1st, 2022, concerning solar. And I'll get, get your pens out, so you can write this down. It's Indiana Code 8142-1. I'll say it again, Indiana Code 8142-1. So the state legislature passed and made effect of July 1st, 2022, requirements and regulations concerning solar, okay? That is going to greatly affect the work we've done on our current solar statute. It doesn't negate it all, but what's different about this law, it's not, it doesn't ever happen, but it's unusual, this ordinance says that the county cannot put more restrictive terms on this statute. So in other words, if there's setbacks in the statute, we're stuck with the setbacks. Now, this only deals with commercial solar, not day-to-day solar, I'll call it, you know, for facilities, schools, that type of thing. I have not had a chance to get through this, because I just got it last week. What my plan is, subject to what the Plan Commission preferences are, is to go through this and compare this to our current solar ordinance, see what, what things that the county does not have discretion on anymore, and what the county does have discretion on anymore. And my suggestion to the Plan Commission is, you know, we have a solar ordinance, but it doesn't just deal with solar farms. We've got to address the other solar in the county that have connected to buildings, et cetera. So, depending on what the Plan Commission wants me to do, my suggestion is, pull out everything in the current zoning ordinance that deals with solar farms, create a new chapter in the solar ordinance that only deals with commercial solar, and that chapter would then be consistent, I had to make it consistent with the state law, we cannot trump state law, and then, I can all, show the, the Plan Commission what areas the county still has discretion in. I think that might be cleaner and neater, because we don't, we can't, we don't want to completely limit our entire solar ordinance, because we've got a lot of solar outside of farms that we, that we need to deal with. So, that's where we're at right now. We gotta, I got, I have a lot of work to do to get it to you folks, so you can start making decisions, frankly.
Thank you. Any questions related to that?
Mitch sent something through today. Did anybody get that from Mitch's email? Do we need to also look at that, his suggestions there?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
He's got a pretty good segment on the, on the noise ordinance of the, how much noise these are.
Well, Purdue did a nice study, which I went over very carefully, and there, there was some stuff in our ordinance that we could have had, that would, that we needed to add. Now, though, a lot of these areas are in the state statute, so we really, like, sound, how, what the voltage of the cables is, and how deep they should be buried, all that, all that stuff is, oh, and reflection, Blair, we didn't have those things in our solar ordinance, so we're about to put them in, but they're already in the state statute. Now, the suggestion Smith said, or suggested, as long as they're not more restrictive on this, on, again, this is commercial solar, as long as they're not more restrictive, then we, we can use them. If they're more restrictive than the state statute, we can't.
I've had some people tell my lawyers who've taken a different view to that, their lawyers, so we'll have to be careful.
Oh, I'm sure they are.
And that's why we have two always, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Just leave that open to suggesting how that's.
In zoning, in zoning, the general rule of thumb is, it's a statutory animal. This board is created by statute. Your rules are created by statute, and how you make your decisions on subdivisions, et cetera, is both the zoning code and the statute. This is the same thing as the, as the other zoning stuff. Okay? So people have tried to challenge it in the past. My opinion is, as is with most state law, state law trumps county law, county ordinance.
One of the things I think we identified, that we've identified, and that I want to see, perhaps we're able to tonight, is making a change on the bond language, so that it gets changed to every five years, versus right now, it just stops, I think, at 15. I think that's a reasonable idea for, for us to consider, for us to consider later. Does anybody have any additional thoughts on that? Okay.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, 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 I think.
Well, just keep in mind, there's a section in the state statute on decommissioning, and the percentage and amounts and time. So, they're, they're, they're addressing it here, okay? And I, and this is, this is 100-mile overview, because I had not read this carefully yet. But they're, they're saying once every five years, and after the 10th anniversary start date. So that's what the state statute says. So I think anything we pass here is probably going to be, not going to be in compliance with the state statute.
It, it, it's possible it may not, and then we just, if it does turn out that way, maybe not enforce it, but as, as I look through some of that statute, and I've gone over it this past week, it looks like some of it is either setting some minimum requirements, or unlike the battery, maybe this is a better way to put it, unlike the battery energy storage systems the best, where it's very, very explicitly takes all that control, almost 99% of that control, and hands it over to the Indiana Department of Homeland Security. For the solar, when I read it and look at it, and I'm not a lawyer, but when I look at it and read it, it doesn't, it doesn't necessarily seem to preclude some, the, the comply, the blanket, kind of, that you, you seem to take it in that regard. So I, and I've, I bounced off a buddy of mine, who's an attorney in another state, and so obviously, he's not familiar with all the Indiana rules, but he kind of got that initial impression, looking through it as well. And I've heard from one or two other attorneys on that, so I, I think there's, there may be some, I don't know if ambiguity is the right word, but some disassociation with some of that, as to what we can and can't do, and I would think that we may be in a safe place, as if we want to tighten up a few things in the language of our existing one, perhaps here tonight, while we're in anticipation of maybe pulling part of the industrial solar out in its own separate area, that maybe we do that, and then if it does turn out that it doesn't, then we, we don't necessarily have to enforce it, but at least it gets it on the books now, so that if we are, so that if we are able to do this, then we have some of those additional guardrails in place, just in case, so that way, maybe kind of cover both bases. That's just my initial impression and gut feeling, and I don't know how the Board's going to play out.
If it's not in here, the county can do what it wants to do.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? And this doesn't cover everything 100%, so I, I agree with you completely.
Okay.
But if, if, if it is in here, and we do something in contravention, this is going to trump it.
Yeah.
Okay?
Another one of the things we talked about for the Solar Committee was in regard to screening. I know we've got some screening requirements in there already. I don't know if anybody wants to, to broach the subject of screening, and what, if anything, we want to do to tighten that up, some of the more, you know, public-facing areas or facing, you know, residents and things like that, to give some, some screening provisions in there.
Six feet minimum, and then some other mounds.
Is there a fencing type specific? I think our fencing type is a six-foot fence for wildlife-friendly fence. I forget the verbiage that they use in there.
Well, the state statute says six foot, but it doesn't really specify what type.
Okay.
And I don't remember what we have. Let me see if I can find it.
I think we already have some language, too, that includes vegetative buffers, and specific, well, for instance, if we're, if we were doing a planned unit development, there's specific landscaping, it comes down to the exact number of trees and bushes that there has to be, so we, we do have some precedent for that.
Well, Mitch also hit that in his little publication, too, so, did you get that emailed today?
I did, I'm going to bring it up here in front of me right now.
You might explain who Mitch is, so everybody just doesn't think he's a drop-off law.
Sure, sure. So Mitch Bishop is our county planner. Mitch, would you like to go over maybe a little bit of that?
Yeah, I guess. It wasn't a part of your committee, but I thought it'd be relevant.
Would you want to be anywhere?
Yeah, so, yeah, this, it was just some suggestions possibly look at. I noticed this is something probably, I didn't think was going to be done tonight, so to start the process and everything to look at, essentially, and you're addressing, what was it, buffers? I think you mentioned buffers?
Uh, and screening as well.
Yeah, so in there I had, oh, landscape buffers, I believe, six feet high, and that buffer would be for non-participating, pre-existing homes, so obviously, if there's a house that is facing a neighboring house that's already existing, that buffer would be required. I didn't get into types of trees, types of landscaping, anything like that yet, but kind of a first start at that, so some suggestions there. I believe six-foot high, minimum 12 feet in height, when fully, when the, whatever plants we might use, vegetative strip buffer, whether it be arbor vida, any kind of tree, 12-foot height would be the maximum in height, and then, some kind of maintenance bond, so it is some upkeep, of course, when you ever talk about landscaping, so that would be a part of it as well. And, you know, there's other stuff in here, too, as well, there's some fencing, I know we have that already, but decibel, I know there's a lot, I got a lot of pros and con letters, letters and emails, and one of the things people a lot, a lot of times brought up was noise. You know, a vacuum cleaner is 90 decibels, and the inverters are a lot less than that, traditionally, so, but yeah, there's some additional setbacks for noise, and again, the language is basically for those that are non-participating residents that are pre-existing at the time of the development, so that, that, kind of catering to them, and not the participating landowners, obviously. There's some emergency signage, I didn't see that in the ordinance, so wherever there's a gate, you would have the name of the company, their address, who you call, just basic things like that, that was in there.
I think Mitch had non-participating, excellent residential setbacks, participant resident setbacks, noise generating equipment setback, fencing, buffers, emergency contact sign drains, interstructure, electrical interference, glare, that require waste management and agreements, is what he sent to us today.
Yeah, that was all of it, but I don't know.
I want you thinking from the past, here's a few, here it is on paper.
I'm not sure what, what part of that yet would apply, looking at the state, the state rules from 2022, but that's something we still need to delve into, but I think there's some good suggestions on this paper. Definitely the committee could utilize them.
Yeah, definitely.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't want to put Mitch and Doug on the hot seat here, but for the ground rules, for the public to know, the Plan Commission operates under Indiana Code 36-dash multiple numbers, and if we do not follow that, then it will be overturned. So there are things that this Plan Commission follows through, a comprehensive plan, public meetings, a joint, or, back to the Commissioners, back to our ordinance, back to public meetings, back to the Commissioners. If we do not follow that statute, this is beyond the statute that Doug's talking about, it will be overturned, and has been overturned many times in the state of Indiana. So, for the ground rules, for the public to know, we have to follow that statute.
Yes, absolutely. Did, did everybody get a, get a copy of Mitch's suggestions? No?
I, I did not, no, but Tony sent it to me, so I just got to make sure you have my emails.
Yeah, yeah, if you wouldn't mind forwarding it to everybody.
He did, but I just want you to know.
Who doesn't have it?
She needs to be on the email list.
I need to be on the email list.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Mr. Watson needs it as well.
Very good. You get it? Watch your email. So the job to keep us in the rules is our attorney, so when he talks, we have to listen, so thank you.
For those who are on the committee, does anybody want to speak about any, some of the stuff that we went through, or any of the stuff that kind of hit home for, for any of you?
Well, I just think, because we, you know, I thought we were going in a good place, looking at what we could and couldn't do, but now that we have that state, we find that, that, I think that's something that we really need to get into and make sure that we're following that, so we don't have problems down the line.
This is not gospel, because I just leafed through this, okay? Just now, but I don't see anything on screening in the state statute.
Yeah, I didn't see it.
Now, on screening, I'm, I'm just talking about commercial production, okay? But on, when we're talking about residential, and there's not, anything outside of a solar farm, we are covered in screening, the way I drafted this, the screening defaults to that zoning area's requirements, and we have screening requirements for certain zoning areas. Does that make sense? So we're covered in screening in our normal areas, but I, I, I think we can talk about screening, you know, after I go through everything, for the commercial enterprise. So there's the one example that we can control, and that's why I want to get, you know, draft this red line, what the state said, and then what we have left to work with, okay?
Yeah, it's one of the things I heard from a number of adjoining landowners, was, you know, their house is going to be two or three sides, you know, surrounded by solar panels, you know, they wanted something to make sure, you know, they were, could look out and have a, have a decent view when they look out their windows, and that's, that's something I think that we should be able to respect and take under advisement and do something with.
We did discuss the value of a home, what happens, we didn't do anything about it, but if it goes down dramatically because it's in the middle of a solar field, it's somebody's fault, it's not the economy's. It would be this outfit right here, so we have to watch land values, I would think, carefully.
Anybody else have any other thoughts right now? All right, we're going to open the floor up for, for a little while for public comment. I would ask, preferably, if anybody has spoken before, to hang back for just a couple of minutes, and let anybody who hasn't spoken yet, you know, over these past couple of meetings, give them an opportunity to come up, and then, and then, once, you know, had some folks who haven't spoken before come up, then, you know, everyone else, just, just for fairness sakes, I know, I know we have some new faces in the audience here tonight, so we'll open the floor to, to public comment, and preferably, if you haven't spoken yet before and you'd like to speak, please come up, and come on up. Hi.
Hi.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name and address for the record, please.
Lori Johnston, 5704 East 200 North, Rolene Prairie. You've heard from Mike Ekovich, Steve Hollifield, and other members of the community who are concerned and speaking against this solar project. You've also heard from some of the property owners leasing their land to the project, who say the ground needs to rest, which it doesn't, and that how it's the wish of their mother. What we didn't hear is how much money will they be making? The solar company seems to have plenty from government grants and funding, so it's a win-win for them, and a lose-lose for us. I'm here tonight because you haven't heard from any of the adjacent landowners. My husband and I will be surrounded, all four sides of our house, with this project. We, unlike some of the leases, we live in our house 365 days a year. Every window we look out, there'll be solar panels. We've attended many meetings since we've heard of this project three or four months ago. Any petition before the Board for a storage container has been denied. Because of the visual aesthetics. What do you think my view will be? Solar panels out every single window. We sit on the front deck every night. If this project goes through as planned, all we'll see is solar panels. The weekends, we enjoy our backyard with swimming pool. If this goes through, all I'll see is solar panels. There won't be any peace and quiet for three-plus years of construction, the constant noise from the converters, 10 to 12 hours a day. Did you know the temperature around these large solar projects can be different than the surrounding areas? Which means our electric bill will go up in the summer, our gas bill will go up in the winter. That's another lose-lose for us. Your home is your biggest investment. Our property value will go down. I know a gentleman who lives on Snowberry Road, just outside of New Coral Isle, right in the middle of the solar project. His house has been up for sale. He's gotten one offer of half the value, and that was from the solar company itself. Now, something you may not know, some of the leases have chosen not to have the solar panels surround their houses, but only have them on the backside. When do we get to choose? I'll tell you. We spoke to the project manager of the Blue Stem Project. She said, sure, we could move some panels from the east side to the west side, we can put up more screening, but only if we sign a contract with them. Oh, they did offer us $20,000 to keep our mouths shut, never speak against the project in public, or to sue them if something should go wrong. This contract, it's a nice way of saying bribery, hush money, extortion. As you can tell, we didn't sign. Joe, you've stated in a meeting, how can we tell an elderly couple no about wanting to rent their land to pay their medical bills, or to keep the land for their grandkids? But our property will be worth nothing. Our living expenses will go up, and we'll have to deal with the noise, the pounding of thousands of poles into the ground, the traffic, the heavy equipment, the chaos for three or more years, then, all the noise and ugliness of the panels, the converters, for the rest of our lives. Let them sign with the solar, let them surround their houses with the panels, limit the number of acres that can be used for solar, but please amend the current ordinance to help those of us that don't want to sign. We need further setbacks from non-participating landowners, better screening for noise and views, we need an escrow account for our property values, we need more groundwater These massive solar projects aren't green, they're destructive to our farmland, to our livelihood. They're only 20% effective, and they lose efficiency every year they're in service. They bury hundreds of miles of cable beneath the ground, pound thousands of poles, 10 feet deep, pour concrete for foundations that are supposed to be temporary. They're going to dump gravel and stone for their access roads, they change the atmosphere. This is why La Porte County needs a stronger ordinance, for those of us that don't get a say in what happens, and maybe to help the ones that do, but aren't listening. a say in what happens, and maybe to help the ones that do but aren't listening to their brain, they're listening to their greed. Please don't make a mistake that we'll have to suffer with the rest of our lives. I've got a copy of that contract if you'd like to see it.
Thank you, yes.
Want to see it?
Thank you. Public comment is still open for anyone who would like to speak.
Please silence your phones, please.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Emily MacDuff. I'm a project developer with RWE Clean Energy managing the Blue Stem solar project. We've got some dance music. I just want to say I feel for residential neighbors like Lori and Dan. I've reached out to every adjacent residential neighbor within our project area for that very reason. There are things like setbacks that aren't in the current solar ordinance that we noticed and we accounted for in our design, going off of the Indiana State Suggested Sightings and even going beyond that. So for any non-participating residential neighbor, we're doing 250-foot setbacks, as well as vegetative screening. And for any non-participating property owner, 100-foot setbacks. So I've reached out to folks to work with them on design, and that's regardless of the construction and convenience payments that we're offering for folks who boarded the project on one side or more sides. And the reason we're offering that amount of money to people who are adjacent to the project is they don't own the land that's a part of this project, and that is unfair, that they're right next to this and there will be construction next to them. What's the piece of the pie that they're gonna get? So out of, to be a good neighbor to these folks who are adjacent to the project, we're offering standard amounts. If you boarded the project on one side, $5,000. And if you boarded the projects on more than one side, $20,000. And that's during construction. If they want to donate that money to charity, they can do that, too. But that's to really have a form of direct communication with folks so that we can sit down, work through this design, and hear their questions and concerns so they can come speak to us. Now, they don't have to take those payments or give those payments away for us to work with them. That's just something in addition that we're offering residential neighbors in the area. And I'd just like to say, we really, we're here to work with folks and hear folks. So I just wanted to clarify that, and thank you guys for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. President, could I clarify something? I don't know if everybody's clear. This commission is not gonna make any decision on the solar project at all. They don't have the authority to. That's gonna come at the Board of Zoning Appeals, whenever they file it, I'm guessing May or June, okay? What these folks do is draft the ordinance and make recommendations to the commissioners. I just want to make sure everybody's clear. They're not gonna make a decision on this project at all. They don't have the authority to do so, okay?
Mr. President, if I could jump in and piggyback on what he said.
Yes, please, Mr. Pollin.
In addition to what he said, if and when a petition is filed, all the adjoining landowners will get certified mailings. They'll get noticed, so they will be able to attend that specific meeting with that board and speak again. And the other thing that I wanted to say is about the shipping containers. There are three different types of variances. If the solar people file a petition, it is a special exception. The shipping containers is a variance of developmental standards. They're two different things, they're two different procedures, they're two different decision criteria. For anybody that is interested in following up on that and learning about it, all of that is available online. You can contact our office, we could send you the PDFs, or you could Google on your phone or your computer, "La Porte County Special Exception Decision Criteria," and it'll pop up. It'll show you what the petition looks like for the folks that are filing, and it'll show you the decision criteria that the board has to follow. That's my comment.
Thank you.
Good evening. Steve Hollifield, 6782 East, 100 South Mill Creek. We know that we're not gonna make any kind of a decision here. We're not telling you to make a decision on a solar project or anything else. I would hope that you'd quit calling them farms. They harvest nothing. There's no crops grown, there's no food grown. Currently did some research, and Boone County, in the way I understand it, the Plan Commission does have authority to recommend a moratorium to the county commissioners to place that. We are going to have, this year alone, we're gonna have a federal election, a state election, and a local election. There's gonna be a different government in place come January 1st. Win, lose, or draw, there's gonna be a different government. So we don't understand what the problem would be for you guys to impose a moratorium to get this ordinance in place, because currently, right now, I spoke with Mr. Pollin in the hallway, if they come forward with this before the new ordinance is in place, they have to follow the old one. I don't believe the state ordinance is strong enough. I believe they researched this quite well and found out that the state ordinance is a very, very weak one, and that's why they're here in the state of Indiana right now. So we'd like for you guys to consider sending to the commissioners to have them place a moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chris Williamson, 4102 South, State Road 104. I guess first off, the first lady's speaking, was quite heartfelt, truly was. But we all need to understand that this 1,600-acre solar farm that is being proposed right now is only Phase 1 from RWE. Phase 2 is published on their website, which is rationally, proportionally, gonna be another 800 acres, and will include a best system of 100 megawatts, okay? So they are jumping in with both feet. The history of RWE, I think you should understand who La Porte County's thinking about doing business with, and so should the farmers. They filed the largest bankruptcy in the history in Germany, okay? They say they're trying to get out and replace all these coal electric generators, which is the green thing, but yet they're suing the European government so they can keep their coal generators running past 2030 for 1.6 billion euro, okay? The BZA, for some reason, put a little, almost promotional thing on their website to see their financial statements. Well, their financial statements are 16 months old. If I went to get a homeowner's loan, took a W-2 form in from 2022, they'd laugh at me. They'd say, that's not present. Well, 2022 was a good year for RWE because they had an acquisition of Con Edison, and their asset-to-debt ratio was wonderful. Ask for 2023, their stock stayed flat, nothing, stayed a 40-year-old all year long. And now in 2024, in the first three months, RWE's stock has gone down 25%, and their cash flow has dropped 106%, okay? Somebody's gonna get hurt, and it's gonna be the people around the solar farms, and inevitably, the people that are leasing the solar farms. That's my personal opinion. Mr. Parker, I agree with you with land property, land values going down. There's an argument, I mean, it's gonna be assessed the same, it could be appraised the same, because they look at it, but look at the neighborhood you're in. When your neighborhood goes downhill, so does your property value. It's like Mr. Haney said at the last meeting, or the meeting before. Who wants a hog farm next to their property? Nobody. You can put the same piece of property in a gated community by Kestrel Park, or one on 150 North next to a hog farm, identically, same appraisal, same assessment, you're not gonna get what it's worth, ever, ever. Thank you.
Thank you. While our next individual's coming up for public comment, I see a bunch of folks out in the hallway out there. We see you out there, thank you for coming. If the other side of the meeting room right now is still being taken up by the prosecutor's office and some other offices here while we get the top floors opened up for the complex, otherwise this side, this other half would be open so we could get everybody in here. Hopefully, it's just another few weeks, and we can get those offices moved back upstairs so we can utilize this entire room. But I just wanted to point that out, that we do see you guys out there, and we're sorry that there's not more room in here for you. Please.
Yes, my name is Steve Mallory. I live on 988 North, 250 East. We had a situation this winter. Wife and I were gone for about a month or so, and we had an individual that's a farmer next to us that came on our property illegally and installed 12-inch pipes that ramped in his farm through our property. We did not give him permission. He used a culvert to run through there. We had to call the sheriff on him twice. We gave him two days to get off the property. We had a rather serious argument. I was out of town, we had to do this over the phone, and basically, the deputy said, well, he's gonna need two days to get his equipment off the property net. So we thought, okay, we'll give him two days. It took him eight days to get that equipment off of there. And we had to bring the sheriff in a second time to get him to agree that he was gonna put his own culvert in, instead of using the culvert that is by us, because that shuts down that property, and we can't use it for residential purpose, because he's running, we have 200-foot of property there, on the front there, all right? Approximately 170 foot that where the easement is, he would have to run that down towards his property net, and then down, or not to his property, on the easement, they had the right-of-way, the county right-of-way, and into his property net. So that leaves me 30 foot left, or approximately 20 foot, 20 foot to 30 foot left. There is electric pole and two guy wires that go through there that shuts that down. So if I wanted to sell that property for residential, I couldn't do it, because that's totally shut down. So that's a serious situation for us. So what we've got, we've got the solar panels in front of us, to the right of us, he's going to, it took him eight days to pump that animal waste from his farm. I calculate, let's see, the 12-inch pipe, it would pump 54,144,000 gallons. And I have paperwork here that I'd be more than happy to give. This is the culvert here, and here's the paper here that shows the amount on a 12-inch pipe.
Sure.
Are we talking solar, or are we talking something else now?
No, this is animal waste, because this is affecting us, because we have...
Wait a minute, and this is solar meaning?
Yes, it is, but I'm telling you that this is affecting us solar-wise, too, because we're getting hurt twice.
Okay, go back to the microphone.
Thank you. Thank you. John, will you mind sending that?
Because in the, this way when you're done with it. In the front of us, we have solar panels, and now we gotta put up with several million gallons being pumped beside us and that. So on your map and that, you'll see that basically, that there's only two sections on our road that has solar panels. Why this can't be moved to another area so we don't have to be hit twice with two different things? We've got a hazardous waste site, there's gonna be approximately 200 acres that's gonna be covered with this animal waste. There's a neighbor next to me that has injection within 50 foot of his house. I don't know what the county regulations are. It seems a little close to be putting animal waste in that, because you have a well that you need to be concerned about. So this needs to be getting under control. And the other concerning thing is, is he's running his 12-inch pipe over the Kanke River. He pumps 24 hours a day for eight days after dark. And so his pipe is running over the Kanke River. If he chooses to say, well, maybe I got too much for my land, I'll just pump it into Kanke River. Who's gonna check that? Who's gonna make sure that this doesn't happen, that Kanke River doesn't get contaminated, or that marsh around there that doesn't get contaminated? These are important things that, like I say, need to be done and that. I think that's pretty much all I've got to say.
What was his address? What was your address? What's the address of this? I'm Tony Hendricks, La Porte County surveyor, and I'm on the Technical Advisory Commission for the Kanke River, so what was it again?
It's 988 North, 250 East.
988 North, 250 East. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And if you could, Mr. Miller, if you could reach out, reach out to our building commissioner, perhaps tomorrow, maybe he can get you a card, and he can look a little bit further into what you talked about here this evening. Thank you.
Hello, Dan Straka. I live at 1845 Azalea Drive in Munster with the Land and Liberty Coalition. We go around the state, and we advocate for private property rights, as well as renewable energy development. I know you all were talking about the state sighting guidelines, their recommendations from the state. They're strong recommendations. I know Mr. Hollifield said that they are weak. I'd like to correct that statement for him. They are very strong. The state took a lot of time working on those guidelines and making sure that they looked at all of the different things that your board here is looking at today. And I would consider, I would, if I were you, I would consider taking those recommendations from the state to heart. They're definitely a good place to start, and an even better place to stop. So I think they do a good job of protecting both participating and non-participating landowners, which is obviously the goal of the Area Plan Commission. I know that you all have the job of upholding some type of standard of living, and I commend you for the work that you're doing. We see this all around the state. We were in Boone County last week when they did put a moratorium in. I'm not suggesting a moratorium. I don't think that that does really any good. I know Commissioner Haney, you mentioned that the commissioners and the Area Plan Commission took a lot of time over the last few years, previous years, in 2021, I believe, working on your solar ordinance. I know that the county of La Porte has a lot of other important work that they can do, other than focusing on a solar ordinance for six, 12, 18, 24 months. Don't put a moratorium in. That just only delays the process even more for you all, so you can get on with other business. But as always, I'm available for any help, suggestions, questions. You could yell at me, I don't care. I've heard it before, like, it's fun. It's all in good fun for me, and, you know, I'm doing a job, and I'm trying to help protect private property owners. So, you know, anyone that's behind me that's murmuring right now, I'd be happy to talk to you later, and anyone up on the board, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. We've been doing this around the state of Indiana for about four years. We're a national organization, and, you know, bottom line is, we're conservatives that want to help move the ball forward in different counties throughout the state, so thank you for your time. Who do you work for? The Land and Liberty Coalition. We're a project of the Indiana Conservative Alliance for Energy.
Hi. Mike?
Put that down.
Oh, down.
You bet. You gotta hold the bottom while you're doing it.
Okay, like that?
You're fine.
Okay. My name's Jennifer Miller. I live at 988 North, 250 East. I am directly across from where they're going to put the solar farm. We bought our land and have lived there for 50 years, and we don't want to see that destroyed. We love our country. We moved out there so we could look at the trees, the animals. We don't want it covered up with solar farm. Our daughter, which is a realtor, told us, yes, we will lose property value. We own some acreage next to our house that we bought in '95. We're gonna lose money on that also. So we really don't want it there. If there's any way you can stop it, please stop it, or move the solar panels somewhere else where they have more land to put it. We don't want to look directly at that. It's right across the street from us. We spend all our day outside. We love to be outside. I just wish you would take this into consideration. Thank you for your time. Oh, one more thing. I received the letter from RWE. There's only two other peoples on my road that have received a letter. Why are we the only ones that have gotten letters? Everybody on our road should have gotten a letter. Everybody on our road should have gotten a letter. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name's Antonio Medina. I'm at 855 North, 250 East. After eight years in the Marine Corps, 26 years as a police officer, I retired. And I was looking for a really nice area to live out my life. But now for that amount of time, I'm gonna be looking at solar panels on two sides of my home. I agree with everything that's been said already as far as property values. The one thing that hasn't been mentioned, I think, is that this contract with the solar company is gonna be for 35 years. How many of us are gonna be around in 35 years to hold that company accountable for what they may not do? I'm gonna equate that to, if anybody remembers Montgomery Ward Service Merchandise, any of those merchants. You'd go in there and buy something and they give you a lifetime warranty. Yeah, guaranteed. Okay, at the time when I brought my engagement rings, lifetime warranty. 10 years later, they go out of business. So what's to say that that's not gonna happen with this company? They go bankrupt? Or any number of things could happen in 35 years. How are they gonna be held accountable? And property value's going down? Now I have to consider that. I'm already paying taxes here. Actually, from last year, from the time I purchased it, the home, in 2022, to now, my taxes have doubled. And I just found out. I just found out this was gonna happen. And when I called the representative from the company, pretty nonchalant, "Oh, okay, I don't know why," or whatever. And then when I asked for a detailed map, I was told that, "Oh, we have one, but we can't, we're not gonna give it to you. That'll be made public when we submit our application." So that's not a lot of transparency there to begin with. I'd like to know exactly, because I have fields on two sides of my property, and I know there's multiple owners. I'd like to know exactly where these panels are gonna be going. What am I gonna be looking at in three years? In 10 years? Because this is the place that I chose to live out my life after everything I have done. And now I have to look at this. No notice whatsoever. I could've made a choice and gone anywhere else in the country. But I chose here. Because we have, I have friends that live out by Rolling Prairie. And I chopped around, and this is what I saw, and this is what I liked. I got one of the oldest houses probably in the county. But now I have this to look forward to, which I'm not really, really happy at all with it. Thank you.
Joe Knowlton, 2827 North, 500 East, Rolling Prairie. Just a couple of questions for you guys to ask. Where are these collector stations gonna go? All these solar panels have to be collected into a spot. And then they have to be transmitted to a substation. And that substation has to move it, most likely. Most likely, if they're gonna be bigger, that's what's gonna happen. So somebody's gonna either have a substation in their backyard or the substation's gonna take up a good 10, 15 acres, just the substation alone. Plus, wherever they put it, they're gonna have collector stations. How many megawatts does this produce? You know, a gen station, one unit at a gen station can produce 326 megawatts. And down in Weedfield, they have four units down at Weedfield, the coal. Each unit produces 326 megawatts. What are these solar panels producing? Taking up 2,600 acres, producing how many megawatts, do we know? What's the comparison?
Off the top of my head, I don't know how many megawatts. 275. It's 66,000 homes was the number that I was giving.
About megawatts you can produce. You're taking up a huge landmass. And I'm just curious why utility industries, who are gonna be around, just like this man just said, utility industries are around for a long time. NIPSCO, Duke, AEP. Why aren't their names on these things? Questions you gotta ask. Important. Private enterprises, that's probably why they're on them, because they can disappear. So just think about that and think about the people who are out here too, and their land. Thank you.
Joe, we need to start the regular meeting.
Yes. All right, it is 5:59. We're gonna take like a, right out of 10-minute break. And then at 6:10, we'll start our regularly scheduled Plan Commission meeting. Just be like 10 minutes late. That way, we can take a quick break here. Anybody needs to use the facilities or anything else. And then we'll start our regularly scheduled meeting at 6 o'clock. And anybody who did not speak, who still didn't get a chance to speak, you can speak during public comment during our regular meeting if you haven't spoken yet and you would still like to speak. So please, if you haven't spoken and you did wanna speak, stick around for our regular scheduled meeting. What's that?